Okay, Jane, we'll get started.
So they can work on it and fix them.
Good evening. Today is Wednesday, January tenth, two thousand and eighteen. I'd like to call this evening's city council meeting to order. If we could all please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the pride of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Could I get the roll call, please?
Councilmember Ball?
Here.
Councilmember Stimmel?
Here.
Councilmember Williams?
Present.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
Here.
Councilmember Servini?
Here.
Mayor Thornton?
Here. Next is the consent agenda. If there are no requests for any items to be removed, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved?
Second.
It's been moved in second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor say aye.
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 Motion carries.
Keep up, Joe.
Just because we lowered your chair.
Next, we have councils and staff reports. I have a few comments this evening. First of all, I would just like to wish everybody a Happy New Year. I'm looking forward to a very productive and eventful two thousand and eighteen. I'd also like to welcome the two new city council members, Councilmember Stimmel and Councilmember Ballf, and also Councilmember Williams, who will be starting a new term this year as well. So this is, is this turn number two or three?
Uh, this is the second full one.
Second full one.
Plus that partial when Barbany left.
Well, thank you all for doing what it takes to be here, and I'm looking forward to working with everybody on the council. I just want to remind the council that we do have a city council retreat scheduled for Saturday, January twenty-seventh. It will begin at nine a.m., and it's going to be at Public Works. So hopefully that still will work with everybody's calendar. I tentatively scheduled a work session for next Wednesday, January seventeenth. In talking with Councilmember Williams, there's a conflict for that day. I would like to schedule a work session for next week, Monday being a holiday. So I just want to check with the council right now if we could have that either on Tuesday or Thursday of next week.
I'm good with either.
Either is good. Councilmember Valenzuela, are you available next Tuesday or Thursday?
I won't be back for two weeks, sorry.
You want to dial in?
You could do FaceTime.
Well, six o'clock?
That'd be tragic.
That works? Okay, so for Tuesday, January sixteenth, at six p.m. And it'll be, our financial consultant, Paul Lewis, will be giving a presentation regarding the gambling tax for the City of La Center. Okay, thank you, council.
Mayor, I'd like to thank the council, too, for being flexible, moving it off that Wednesday.
Okay.
Thank you, guys.
Very good. And then just one more item this evening. The city offices will be closed on Monday, January fifteenth, for Martin Luther King Day holiday. So that's all I have this evening. Next on agenda is the attorney's report. Mr. Cairns?
I have one item. The Growth Hearings Board issued its order on compliance today. To give you the background on this, it has to do with the appeal of the county's GMA update. And that happened in two thousand and sixteen, I think, and was appealed by a couple petitioners. And it, that decision basically adjusted the urban growth areas for all the cities within the county. And ours was part of the bundle. That was part of that appeal, fifty-seven acres approximately at the junction. And in the, while the appeal was pending, we annexed the land, and Ridgefield also annexed part of the land, their area. Battleground did not. And in the end, when the Growth Board issued its decision last March, it determined that the county incorrectly re-designated, de-designated the land at our junction and included it in our urban growth area. By then, it was done. It was beyond the county's ability to change it at all. It was inside the city limits. They didn't have any authority over it. So the appeal, everybody involved appealed the decision. Right now, it's at the Court of Appeals. And so this is kind of a one-year-later sort of look back. The Growth Board wants an update from the county to explain why and how it's complying with its March order, its original decision. And, you know, basically, well, it's all on appeal. But the, so it gave us an opportunity to explain more clearly, because it was a giant appeal with lots of different issues with lots of different cities. And the Growth Board seemed to, like, not get the information and evidence about La Center and the justification for the expansion there, and the size of it, and the nature of the land there, and the nature of the land around it, or any of that. Seemed to not understand at all. And it was, compared to Ridgefield's, it was a microscopic expansion anyway. So that's what this kind of look back, this compliance opportunity was. So the county submitted a bunch of information explaining why and how it's in compliance with the Growth Management Act. They had a big hearing. All the combatants showed up for it up in Bothell. And so they issued their order finally today, twenty-nine pages, that this county's in compliance in a couple minor areas, but with regard to La Center, with regard to Ridgefield, it's still out of compliance for the same reasons, basically, that they stated in their underlying order. So I'll distribute this to you by email tomorrow, and I will also distribute a copy of the original decision that the Growth Board issued, because it, and that's kind of a whopper, but you have all this free time. You can just read it. And you can kind of compare, track it there. If you search through it, you can see just the small segments deal with the center. But a couple interesting things in this compliance order, though. They seem to lump La Center with Ridgefield, very different issues. They mentioned the annexation issue, which is our issue. There's pretty clear Supreme Court precedent that came from the last Clark County GMA update in two thousand and seven, that once it's annexed, it's outside the jurisdiction of the Growth Board, it's beyond the jurisdiction of the county. It's, that's how it works under GMA and the annexation statutes. That's how it happens. Until the legislature changes one or both of those statutes, that's what happens. We were just following the law when he annexed it and therefore removed it from the jurisdiction of the Growth Board and the county. In this compliance order, the Growth Board acknowledges how that happened before. They've always viewed it as a sleazy maneuver by cities seeking to elude compliance with GMA. So you can tell the Growth Board is really chafing about this. But they don't really, and they acknowledge the Court of Appeals decision from last time, which kind of pulled it all back in. But they don't really explain or acknowledge that the Supreme Court completely reversed the Court of Appeals with regard to the authority to deal with already annexed land. So in my view, my read with the Growth Board is still in denial about how annexation works. The path that I recommend the council take is that you authorize an appeal of this decision. It'll be combined with the currently pending Court of Appeals proceeding. We've stayed the Court of Appeals proceeding pending the issuance of this order, which is now about two weeks late, so that they can be consolidated in one appeal. So we don't have disjointed issues, proceedings. It makes it very, very inefficient. So that's the plan, and I would ask the city council to authorize us to proceed with that. Any questions about that? I'll send this order out. This is, I wouldn't call it a shorty, but it's small, it's shorter than the underlying decision.
You put your synopsis with it as well?
Sure.
Thank you.
I could even, I'll see if I can cut out the La Center stuff and compile it in a single kind of stream of consciousness.
Kind of Reader's Digest version?
Kind of, because it is, I think the original order was over fifty pages, and only like this much deals with La Center. And so I can read it, just one or two issues, it's scattered here and there, and the decision, you can spend a lot of time finding it. So I'll try and make it easy on you. Do you two have any questions this evening? You've kind of been watching this from the sidelines over the years, so I'm probably...
At the present time, no.
Okay.
Look forward to your email.
Okay. That's it for now.
Very good. Thank you.
Thanks, Dan.
Any other questions from the council for city attorney? So next on the agenda, we have council comments. Councilmember Ballf?
Good, thank you, Mayor. This is our first meeting of the year. I'd like to wish everyone a Happy New Year, and I wish the best to you and your families for this new year. Second item, I just want everyone to know, my city email is active. I want to know how you feel about items and issues. I'd like your comments, and feel free to email me at any time. Third item, I want to get a little philosophical here. Deb and I made a commitment to retire to La Center over ten years ago. We didn't know when that time would be, but we eventually were able to retire. And as we got settled into La Center, and as we got active in the community and began meeting people, we realized that we had actually underestimated how nice La Center really is. We've really enjoyed living here. Last June, I began the first of two campaigns for office. And my campaigns took me into La Center's various neighborhoods, and I met lots of citizens. And I had a lot of great conversations on front porches and in backyard patios. And in many cases, people whom I had never metted and never met and who had never met me invited me into their homes to discuss their opinions and their concerns and their feelings about La Center. Those meetings reinforced the feelings that I've had about this city, and it's just fabulous with the kind of community that we have here. So with that in mind, I want to say that I'm looking forward to representing and working with the citizens of La Center. And I am very dedicated to this community. Okay, end of philosophy.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Stimmel?
Well, normally this time of year, I'd say something about driving on icy roads, but it's fifty degrees outside. I want to echo Mr. Ballf's comments about collecting and gathering comments and questions from La Center residents. My email's up and running. I finally got it working. I'll be checking that most likely daily, so I look forward to hearing from folks who have questions or comments. Thanks again for the opportunity. I'm excited to get started. I too love this city. Having little kids running around this city, there are a ton of events for kids, and I've never lived in a place this nice. And I don't ever want to leave, but thank you again for the opportunity to serve. That's all, man. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Councilmember Williams?
I don't have anything tonight, Mayor. Thank you.
Good. Councilmember Valenzuela?
No comment.
Councilmember Servini?
I'd just like to wish everyone a Happy New Year, and to you and your family. And with the darkness and the rain that we're experiencing, just watch out for those kids out there. And all of our walkers enjoying those trails, so be careful.
Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have staff reports. This evening, Chief Jaeger with Clark County Fire Rescue is here, and he has a few comments for us.
Thank you, Mayor, and council and citizens. So tonight, I can't be more pleased to brief you on something that happened for us. And I have to start with a little bit of a background. In oh-nine, when the property values started falling, as we all know, we're completely funded on property values. And over the next four years, our budget took a hit of over five million dollars. So to us, that meant a lot of layoffs, and in fact, we ended up having to shut a station down. Not the one in the city, but just to the east of the city. And I'm proud to say tonight that thanks to the taxpayers voting for our lid lift, back up to a buck fifty. And our firefighters last month voted to work an extra ninety-six hours a year, times forty guys, for the exact same pay. What that did was it allowed us to open that fire station again. And again, I just want to clarify that our stations are part of the system. So even though that station wasn't in the city limits of La Center, what it means is our rating, surveying rating that all of our insurance is based on, again drops. It means that every time there's a call on the east side, this engine gets to stay in the city. And it means that that engine on our east side gets to come quicker. We have those calls that require two, three, or four engines. So we are extremely pleased, and I've been dying to tell you.
Very good.
Thanks for your time. And I will say, please don't jinx the roads and the ice. And thanks for everybody, at least for this area. Our New Year's Eve party calls were manageable, so thank you.
Very good. Thank you, Chief. Next this evening, we have a staff report from the Public Works Director, Director Service.
Mayor, council, citizens. Rather rehash, I'm just looking forward to two thousand and eighteen. You can see by the staff report, this isn't even a complete list, but these are pretty big discussions that we tend to have with council that we will be making decisions on eventually. And some of these we've already started. So I think I would just rather answer questions tonight if I could and make this brief.
Was there any damage at John Pollock Park with the high water?
Just the mud.
Just the mud? Hey, it's not a sign of Barbara's, that word.
Yeah, it's going to be part of that, part of the river coming in.
Yep. Nothing you can do about it.
Every year.
We predict it. Okay?
Okay, very good.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next on the agenda is citizens' public comment. If anyone would like to address the council, please step up to the podium and give us your name, and limit your comments to three minutes. Chris?
Hi, I'm Chris Soski, and I'm with La Center United. And while I'm not actually a member in the city itself, I'm in the community. And you had mentioned how nice it is to have young kids here and have things for them to do. But what, there really aren't a lot of things for kids that are in middle school and sometimes in high school before they start driving. And so we have started on getting a teen center together. I think it's something that since I've moved here and I had teenagers, has been asked for. And, you know, there's just nothing for these kids to do. They get in trouble, that's when we start. So it's going, because we've gotten free space from the church. It's walkable from the school, which I think is just great. We're still working through the paperwork. You know, it's dealing with government, you know how that goes. So a couple things I would like to ask. In looking through, you know, volunteers is what we're doing. We're doing this with no money. There are some companies that have volunteer programs, and I just wondered if the city has a volunteer program. I don't expect you to answer me right now, but maybe I could get back with you on that. And the other thing is, could we get a letter of support from the city? And again, I don't expect you to answer that right now. I don't know if you have any questions for me, or if that's the time to do it.
Well, the only question I have is when we met last, it was last week already, we were talking about a program in Battleground that you were very interested in somewhat emulating here. What was the name of that program? And can you tell us a little bit?
That's called Rock Solid, and they've been in Battleground for fifteen years. They started very small, and we expect to start small. And, you know, and they have grown up, and there's a lot of city involvement, there's a lot of local businesses involved. It's become quite a community thing. They have the disadvantage of being in Rush Prairie, where in order to get students there, they have to get on a bus. Where for our students, it's very reasonable for them to walk.
Okay, good. All right, appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chris, I'd like to publicly thank you and your husband for all that you do for the community. Even as you mentioned that you live outside the city limits, you're deeply involved with the schools and so many things, helping our kids, so thank you for that.
Thank you. Okay. Would anyone else like to address the council this evening?
Just a couple of things. We're in 2009 West Seattle, La Center. Council, mayor, and citizens, I just want to say, we're in a brand-new year, two thousand and eighteen, so I hope we're all ready to roll, new council members, what's rolled. So I just want to differ with what the mayor said. He's hoping for an eventful year. I'm hoping for an uneventful year. No desire, no disasters, no breakdowns. Everything runs real smooth. And the other question I have is for the Director of Public Works. Are we going to have a ceremonial flush when the sewer opens? That's all.
A purging of the pipes? Purging of the pipes?
Good, thank you. Okay, next on the agenda, we do have one ordinance this evening, and a public hearing. Public hearing ordinance number two thousand and eighteen dash zero one, approving the annexation of approximately twenty-two point five nine acres of real property to the City of La Center and rezoning that property consistent with the La Center comprehensive plan. And Mr. Eiseman was not able to make it here this evening, so our city attorney, Daniel Cairns, will do the presentation. He's the planner tonight, yep?
Thank you. This annexation has been in works for a while. Actually, I'm not quite exactly sure. I couldn't identify it on the map. Jeff, can you laser point where it is?
Sure.
This is, as I understand it, destined to become the new school site. And one change, by the way, that's important for you to know in your packet, the most important operative document is the ordinance itself. And it, the recitals explain the history of this particular application. And the change is, I have a new Exhibit A, it's a property description for the territory. And this came, now the school district is getting actively involved. This came from their attorney. I'm not sure how it's changed, but I'm assuming that since they are the ones with the most at stake, that it is more correct than the previous property description. So if you approve this tonight, it would be with this new and improved Exhibit A property description. But anyhow, it's twenty-two plus acres. It's pretty straightforward what this is about. And it's, the requirements for annexation is that the land be contiguous to the city limits and that it can be served. This will come in with urban residential designation, plan designation in a low-density residential zone. As with most annexations that you get, they also have the urban holding that will be retained until the property owner or developer, whomever is responsible for it, comes forward and demonstrates the adequacy and availability of the urban services needed to support urban development on this land. So once it comes, is transferred from the urban growth area into the city, it is then primed and ready for urban development under your zoning ordinance. And that's the deal here, and it will be for a school. That's, it's as simple as that. Any questions? So you could take a moment, maybe go through the recitals and the annexation ordinance. The recitals explain the background, and then the actual legally binding part of the annexation ordinance are after the, now there are four parts, sections one, two, three, four, five, six. Notice we're not doing anything goofy with the zoning on this. I'm not going to do that. It's straightforward. Follow the code, it's kind of my recommendation, and that's what this does. The zoning part is dealt with in Section Two of the annexation ordinance.
Dan, do we all have a copy of that amendment?
No, I just got it today. But there is, if you look, the task of the ordinance is in Exhibit A, consists of multiple pages, actually, three descriptions, parcels one, two, and three. This consists of three tax lots, so there are three property descriptions, one, two, and three, and then drawing a diagram. What I was, what I received today is a new description for parcels one, two, and three.
Exhibit's the same, it's just a description.
Exhibit A, yeah. And I haven't compared the two. It's always a hazard for a lawyer to read property descriptions. I could do that. Please don't make me do that. But also, an important thing is, we always annex all, you know, abutting rights of way, just so you know. And it's important to make the distinction that the annexation of those abutting rights of way, it comes within the city limits. Those will come within the city limits. But they won't necessarily become city-owned and managed and maintained. That oftentimes is through a different or separate process. Sometimes it happens at that point. So for example, I-5 is within the city limits, but we don't maintain it, so.
I'm not questioning that, but you're asking us to pass an ordinance without reading that?
Good. I have, I could forward the email, I could pass this down. It's the three parcels.
Can we make copies?
What did I tell you?
It's double-sided. I could forward to, I don't know if that will help.
You could email.
I could email it to you.
Dan? I'm looking at the map here, the survey map.
Yeah, the last page of Exhibit A.
Yeah. What's Excelsior Mortgage Equity Fund? Is that, is that something?
Not a party to this proceeding, I don't believe.
Okay, so the, this, these three pieces of real estate have a small section where they touch the highway.
So if you see, there are three parcels called Proudie, Proudie, and Proudie.
Yeah, I see that.
Yeah. Those are the parcels we're talking about.
So you've got neighbors?
Yeah, everyone's got.
Other properties?
I could explain if you want.
We'll just wait one second on that. Is, can we, Jenny, can you pull up the map?
It's just final.
There you go.
There we go.
So maybe point Proudie one, Proudie two, and Proudie three.
Thank you.
Proudie two, and then the ones below are the parcels we're talking about. I think what you're talking about is the one to the east.
The east and the north? It just, it kind of, just a little bit, they don't have a whole lot of access there. I don't know. We'll find out later. But I didn't know if that was part of it or not.
Nope. Proudie, Proudie, and Proudie.
Yeah, okay.
The other parcels are, just the Proudies isn't...
It's a pretty big piece of land.
Another way to look at this, if you want to see it, is attached in the packet is the annexation application, and it has the GIS maps from the county illustrating the property.
Oh, okay. Sorry. No, you should, no.
Page five, yeah, page five of that document, these maps. As I understand, this is coming from the, uh, school district's lawyer, the reason for the change, it was updated by the title company. So it's in a form that they apparently like to see as well for closing on transactions.
Okay, I'm gonna open it up for the public hearing part, if there's no questions, I'm gonna, we can continue on this, but, uh, superintendent of schools is here this evening too, he may have something that he can add to this, uh, conversation as well. So, at seven thirty, I will open up the public hearing, uh, if anybody would like to comment on this or address the council, please step up to the mic, and if you give us your name and address, now would be a time to do that, and if you have something, Dave, that you can help us with here.
I don't know if I can help you so much as try to clarify, uh, kinda how we got to where we are. Um, the difference in the legal descriptions, if you were to go back to the original map, the one that was up first, um, this came out of a survey mistake going back many years ago, where, um, those properties were surveyed, and the survey was taken off, was basically, what I understand has happened historically, off of a large rock. It was in a location in the backside of a, of the corner of the, of the lower property. And over a period of years, before another survey occurred, the rock got moved. And so the subsequent survey, they went off the description of the previous survey and used the rock, which then resulted in two surveys that didn't match. And so, in the purchase of this property there, and you can see the, the, um, hashed line is the piece of property, and it was all owned by the Proudies, both, all the contiguous property there is owned by the Proudies. So they weren't really motivated to worry about what the impact of that was, and they never resolved that situation. So in terms of, a part of the sales agreement, since that line and the piece of the, of the property that is shaded, or that is in dispute, so to speak, uh, has a power easement going down, it is not really usable to the district or the farm. Um, the district agreed to grant that back out of it, not contest who should legally own that sliver of property. So the new survey, uh, does not include the shaded portion in that back corner that was in, uh, again, a dispute because of the moved, moved rock. So what you have in front of you, that just came today, is the updated legal description from the surveyor that went through the attorney that now matches that, uh, new, um, agreement. So, the, the piece that is shaded is now going to be, uh, platted and needed back to the remaining Proudie property that is to the west, if that makes sense. And then the other question was the Excelsior Mortgage Equity property at the top, that triangle, um, the three Proudie properties, or the Proudie number, I'm not sure what the number is, the large, the one on the top right corner has a ninety-three foot touch on the county road, which is, um, uh, acceptable for entry, for what we would use. We are in the process of working on, um, a situation to, uh, I'll just say broaden or expand the access with the property owner of Excelsior right now, and that's just still in the works, so, um, our board is, um, is wanting to, uh, work something out with that, but we haven't finalized agreement yet, so, down the road, there's a good probability that will happen, so... So question, um, the, with the corrected legals, is the hashed part, part of the annexation territory, or not? No. Okay. So, okay, so that's the difference, as I see it from, as this was pro, going through the process till now, which is the, the final, final.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other comments during the public hearing portion of the meeting? Seeing none, uh, at seven thirty-five, I will close public hearing, and turn it back to the council for any questions or discussion?
Did all that make sense? It's important to pin these details down before the annexation ordinance is inked.
Okay, so, I don't think we have anything else to discuss here, do we? I mean, this is just to accept sixty percent petition to annex.
This annex, is it?
Yeah. Oh, this, this finishes it off?
Yeah, all you need is sixty percent, this is a hundred percent.
Oh, okay.
That's what we, we call it, because that's all it is.
All's required, yeah.
Yeah, I don't think you've ever had anything less than a hundred in my time here. Cause usually they're kind of owner, just a collection of owners, and they don't have any in holders, so...
The initial Proudie annexation was a hundred percent.
Was that right?
So are we entertaining a motion?
So we're gonna need a motion, I think.
Mayor, I would submit a mo, motion to approve ordinance number two thousand eighteen dash oh one, um, to include, well, approving the annexation of approximately twenty-two point five nine acres of real property to the city of La Center, Proudie, and rezoning that property consistent with the La Center comprehensive plan, and including exhibit A as submitted.
Second.
It's been moved in secondant to approve an ordinance for the annexation of approximately twenty-two point five nine acres of real property to the city of La Center, and rezone that property consistent with the La Center comprehensive plan. This is an ordinance, so can I get a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Boff?
Yes.
Councilmember Stimmel?
Yes.
Councilmember Williams?
Yes.
Councilmember Valenzuela?
Yes!
Councilmember Servini?
Yes.
The ordinance carries. Thank you, council. Um, very good. Okay, next item that we have on the agenda is a, uh, presentation by Director Sarvis regarding, uh, transmission lines at the La Center junction, I five.
Mayor, council, we've had this discussion, um, quite a few times, and, um, I don't, I think that even, uh, that I know that Councilmember Boff's familiar with it, cause you gentlemen talked about it at, talked about it at the planning commission level, and, and then all the one of the meetings you attended as well. Um, but what I wanna talk about is a, uh, the, Clark Public Utilities needs to build a transmission line between Richfield and La Center to, for power. And, um, back in, um, July of, of twenty seventeen, last summer, the city council approved the La Center Junction, um, zoning district, which required the undergrounding of distribution and transmission. And so, um, staff, uh, consultant Eric Eiseman had come back and he'd give, and talked to the city council about some basic facts, about the location, some of the, some of the variables, some of the costs, and, um, and, and the council moved forward and approved the ordinance requiring the undergrounding of the transmission. So, um, but since then, staff have worked with Mr. Eiseman, or with, uh, with, uh, Mr. Lewis, and, um, and, and talked to property owners, uh, out at the junction, about how are you gonna pay for this? We've talked, we had many discussions with Clark Public Utilities about how to pay for undergrounding. Well, undergrounding and transmission is an undergrounding of distribution, there's quite a difference, and, um, and it's a difference in the wire, a difference in the cost, and, um, the, the estimate is, and, and these are rough numbers, we haven't plotted all these numbers, but the estimate to underground transmission versus placing it over aerial is about five million dollars a foot. So, the old, the project in La Center, if it were underground, would be about five million dollars. Well, there's several ways to pay for it, um, I've, gotta find out what I have there. Doesn't work so well on that table, but it, it's about five million dollars. So what, what staff did, is staff, working with, with, uh, these other folks, um, kinda developed a spreadsheet of, of how, of the, um, various funding options. And so, uh, Clark Public Utilities funded it, um, they, they would consider this a not, um, I wanna make sure I say this correctly, but, but it, it would be more aesthetic than would be necessary for the system. So, they would, uh, recommend to their board, they would, that their, their board, um, charged the resident solar center, power users' solar center, a surcharge, um, for, and they would sell bonds, they would, um, and it would, it would cost the, the resident solar center an additional, about seven hundred fifty dollars per resins per year. Of course, you had to add up for more industrial customers, higher users, it's more for the school district, it's more for the wastewater plant, and that sort of thing, over a five-year period, and repay that debt. So, so you also looked at capital projects fund, um, that the city has, uh, we could use some of that, we could use a non-voted debt, but you're looking at, uh, at, uh, using all your property tax to, to satisfy that debt service, uh, and we looked at an LID, a local improvement district, but that would, uh, require owner approval. Uh, it's, like I said, we talked to the owners, the owners would love, not love, but the owner said, yeah, it'd be great to have them undergrounded, but no, we don't wanna help pay for it. So, and, um, if you look at putting it, uh, uh, in, in a street contract, uh, that's possible, traffic impact fee's not, not, not a viable option, and, uh, there's, there's no nexus to, 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 to traffic here, and, uh, or voluntary payments. And, so, in, in all of the scenarios that we went through, and the folks that we talked with, um, it's, it's pretty unanimous, that there's not a very good way to pay for undergrounding, uh, transmission lines. Um, so, uh, as you can see in what you see in our staff report, we went through a, uh, pretty extensive review, we looked at it carefully, we talked to all of the, the property owners, and we're just not finding an equitable mechanism to be able to fund it, and, um, we would ask, staff would ask that the city council, um, direct us to revise the code to, uh, to, and, and return to the, the city council that would remove the requirement of the transmission lines. Um, I've got quite a few exhibits of the information, if I can answer the questions, I will, but, um, I think that kinda sums it up, you probably tired of hearing about it, really.
Okay, thank you. Um, questions for Director Sarvis?
Uh, I've got one. Uh, it looks, I mean, it, this cost obviously is more than, than we expected. Um, is there any thought towards going farther to the east and not coming down Paradise Park Road? I realize Clark P U D has an easement, pole easement already in place there for taller poles, but can we go over to the east, get it away from the freeway, get it out of the gateway of the city?
Absolutely, we did look at that. We looked at that, and it would be a, well, first of all, there's not any easements, we would have an application, and have had an application, it's been pending and on hold because of the moratorium, first of all, for the zoning, from Clark Public Utilities, but there isn't a pathway right now to go further to the east. It could, potentially could go along the alignment of the new subarea that, that shows that very eastern road and the subarea plan, but nobody owns that, nobody has easements over that. So, yeah, we didn't think about it, but it was a timing issue and an, and additional cost.
Well, this, I meant, an aerial, an aerial line, not an underground line, through there. Just get it away from the freeway and the front edge.
Yeah, it would still be additional cost and time, because there...
Wouldn't be a short, wouldn't it be shorter?
I don't know for sure it'd be shorter.
Would it be the same issue of acquiring the land from the property owners? And not having a dedicated street there yet to follow?
No, I understand that.
So, we did look at it, and it just, you know, cause that would, would have been maybe potentially part of the, the existence of the street. Yeah.
Question, is there a specific reason we lumped distribution in with, uh, transmission as requiring underground as opposed to aerial? Was there, have we ever undergrounded a transmission line?
No. The, the city and, and C P U have not, C P U has undergrounded transmission and the, um, but the, um, community who requested it paid for it.
Oh.
And it was out in Cannes and, uh, Hundred Ninety Second, I believe, that area.
Yes.
It's just, it's just expansive, uh, I think, um, I think Mr., uh, I've got the Clark Public Utilities here that could, could answer any of the, the tough questions, you know? But, the wires made in France, it brings somebody from France to repair it, it's not necessarily a more reliable system, so on, so...
I saw it yesterday when I went out to, I saw it yesterday when I went out to Guo Shu, I noticed it on, on the road.
Yeah, big pool, huh?
No, it's big pool, yeah, these are big pools.
Yep. So, so they, I, I don't think I answered your question as to why it was put into the field, and it was, uh, you know, both liked it at the time, the majority of the council thought that they'd like to see the transmission undergrounded as well as distribution, and it's just, but we hadn't considered, all those stuff that we considered, have looked at in the last six months.
And we've always, for a long time, had the policy of undergrounding, uh, normal distribution lines, new subdivisions, that's a pretty uniform policy in modern cities everywhere, is the transmission line that was new. Um, and I think Randy's articulated, it's a gateway, there were a number of aesthetic reasons why this one in particular would have been kind of a little...
If I may interject something here, I was on the planning commission at, at the time, and, and that was a major consideration, was the gateway, we wanted to have a nice appearance as, uh, as, as people exit the freeway and, and travel east, we just, we wanted that look. Um, we weren't working with a particular cost number at the time, it was, it was aesthetic.
The, the lines are up there today, all come down, those are distribution, those have been undergrounded, or will be undergrounded. Um, and so the only lines you'll see there are the three lines, um, the, the transmission lines at about sixty-five feet high. Even once, the distribution will not be hanging, it will, we only be three wires. And, uh, so, we've worked that out with Clark Public Utilities, so they committed to that. And the distribution has already, was done at the time that the conduit was put in at the time that the construction was done, that's the junction.
And, and as I asked before, maybe I can, if I can address to Dave here directly, uh, no thought in putting the, the substation at the south end of town, and then just have the distribution lines coming up through town? I realize you guys already have a piece of property up there, but it's flat, sellable property.
It's basically the difficulty in getting feeders out through the junction area and to the north, and, uh, it's, you know, we've, we've been purchasing, or purchased property, I think it's ten years ago, so, we didn't go back and relook at buying another piece of property from selling it, and then having to take all the feeders through.
Yeah, cause it, but, my personal concern is, with the, with the development that's proposed in that area, um, it's gonna be in the sightline of Mount St. Helens for anything that goes up there, where your, where your distribution station is, your substation, that's why I asked if, the thought, you know, if there's any way to go down to the south end, then we would, then we have distribution lines.
Even once, the distribution will not be hanging, it will, we'll only be three lines. And so we've worked that out with Clark Public Utilities, so they committed to that. And the distribution has already, was done at the time that the conduit was put in at the time that the construction was done at the junction.
And as I asked before, maybe I can, if I can address to Dave here directly, no thought in putting the substation at the south end of town? And you just have the distribution lines coming up through town? I realize you guys already have a piece of property up there.
Right.
But it's flat, sellable property.
It's basically the difficulty in getting feeders out through the junction area and to the north. It's, you know, we've been purchasing, or purchased property, I think it's 10 years ago. So we didn't go back and relook at buying another piece of property and sell it then. And then happened to take all the feeders through.
Yeah, 'cause my personal concern is with the development that's proposed in that area, it's gonna be in the sightline of Mount St. Helens for anything that goes up there, where your, where your distribution station is, your substation. That's why I asked if the thought, you know, if there's any way we can go down to the south, then we would only have distribution.
Okay, any other questions from the council for Director Sarvis? We're not looking for, we're not gonna be taking action on this this evening. We're just looking for direction from the council. Again, the request is to task staff with coming back to the council with the revised ordinance, and with the council's approval, I would like to.
I would like to ask a question of Mr. Karen.
Sure.
The request is to amend the code. Have we considered a variance, the effect of a variance versus a code change? Because if we change the code to preclude overhead transmission lines, and thinking about the future, 10 years down the road, we have another situation with a need for transmission lines, if that's, if that's possible. And they would be completely, you know, the question, underground.
When I think of things that are fair game for variances or anything that are quantitative, and that there's a general notion in land use law that there are no use variances. And so I think this more akin to a use variance, and so it wouldn't be eligible for standard variance. If you wanna change a numeric, like setbacks, or height, or any kind of dimensional requirement to code, those are subject to variances. But I don't, I don't really, hadn't really thought of this, and it doesn't really fit my model for what is eligible for variance. See what I mean?
I think as far as public utilities, we'd still be looking at the cost involved that would have to be handled either by each of the layers, the businesses and the residents within that zip code. So that's the bigger issue to me than, you know, the overall, how do we make an exception here, and down the road 10 years, what do we do? I guess I've always been the one that's been dragging my heels kicking and screaming when it comes to undergrounding, only because of my experience in utilities. You're talking about public utilities costs and then layering those to the, each of the individual users within that zip code. And I don't, I can't see how you get $5 million chunk change comfortably passed out to the limited residents and businesses that we have and not also be impacted by growth, potential growth in business developers that are looking at to come out to the La Center area in the future. Would be my other concern, was how much of a burden or how easier it would be for them to continue to build at the Ridgefield Junction versus ours.
Distribution's all over, I mean, I mean not distribution, but transmission is all over. The new distribution is undergrounded, and if we were to require undergrounding of aerial today, we get to pay for it, a stay law. So, and I don't know, we can work with Mr. Terms to see if there's a variance, kind of a possibility, but it would be unusual.
As I understand your question, that keep the code as it is, then consider in this instance a variance to the undergrounding requirement.
That's correct.
Yeah, I don't think, first of all, it's eligible for variance. Number two, given our, the variance criteria that we have, I don't think it would qualify, wouldn't get approval. But it begs the policy question as to whether you want transmission lines to be undergrounded anywhere in the city, because you will always be faced with the cost issue. When I've litigated with power companies, and this was with a commercial power company, publicly traded commercial power company, the story I got was, you know, "Look, Mr. City Attorney, we'd be happy to stick it all underground, just tell us who to send the bill to." And the bill means we're not gonna spread it over the entire rate base of the utility that we will limit it to the rate base of the city. And in this case, you know, the various financing options were basically, you know, I urged the mayor and the public works director, you know, "Talk to the affected property owners and get a gauge for how enthusiastic they are for undergrounding and cost, bearing the cost of it, because there are no statutory mechanisms for doing an advanced finance district or those sorts of reimbursement districts, because those are all, you know, transportation related, or sewer related, or, you know, those kind of public utility related, not electrical, per se." So the option were, you basically have to get the affected property owners to say yes. And it's not a large collection, so you try and spread the cost over the largest pool possible. You know, the countywide rate base would be great, CPU won't tolerate that. The most they would say is the citywide rate base, and you saw the cost. And in reality, it's the rate base of those property owners, which increases the per-unit cost all the more. So I think you have to make the policy decision as a policy matter. Do you want these things undergrounded anywhere in the city? And this is just an example where it would happen.
Okay. Thank you. So do we?
Do we need a motion or?
Well, not, just a consent.
Sure, a motion would be good, just kind of general direction.
Yeah, we would make a motion, that would be fine, yep.
Mr. Mayor, I make a motion to ask staff to prepare a revised version of the La Center Municipal Code 18-158-0306 and return to city council with a version that removes the requirement for undergrounding transmission lines.
I will second that.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to prepare, to ask staff to prepare a revised version of the La Center Municipal Code 18.158.030 and return to city council with a version that removes the requirement to underground transmission lines. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed?
Nay.
Was that?
Opposed.
Okay. Motion carries. Thank you very much, Director Sarvis, and you'll be bringing that forth then.
So if you can, it's a public hearing.
Okay.
Notice the conference.
Very good. Thank you. So we do have a couple items here this evening under new business. First item, I would like to discuss with the council a proposed time change for our city council meetings. We've always had our meetings begin at 7:00 PM, and I was going to propose to the council to move that to starting at either 6:30 or possibly 6:00 PM. The primary reason for that is we do hold staff over from 5:00 to 7:00 before these meetings. I would just, I don't know why we've really ever set them at 7:00 to begin with, but again, if, it would have to be 100% approval by the council.
Can you turn you get here?
I think it was, you know, we were all in high school, or earlier, when we sat. The city of La Center was very tiny, and it was a dinner.
It was a town.
Yeah, it was a dinner thing, and people would walk down to city hall for the city council meeting after supper, and there you go.
Your nose is growing, yeah.
It wasn't that much, and meetings were 15 minutes long.
He acts as if he knows this stuff.
So again, would the council be inclined to change the meeting time to 6:30? Now, keep in mind, if we have a work session, then that, when typically our work sessions are an hour prior to a meeting, so those would need to start at 5:30, and that's where I think we might have a little bit of a problem.
Yeah.
Okay, well, again, we do frequently have work sessions before city council meetings.
I'm okay with either.
Okay, either?
I kinda, I like the seven like it is, 'cause then we have the work session at 6:00. I mean, you know, I like to eat for it, come here. I get grouchy if I don't eat.
Oh, no.
So, and it would have to be unanimous, so if one of, Councilmember Williams, if that would not.
Well, no, no, I just, if the rest of the group wants to go with it, I'm good. I just prefer 7:00.
Okay.
I can adapt to whatever.
Okay. Councilmember Valenzuela, you still with us?
I'm here.
6:30 okay for you? That'd be a good timing in California?
Six thirty, six thirty or seven, fine.
Okay. I just think it would help out with the staff, keeping them over and getting them out of here a little bit earlier, so. Okay, so that will require a change to the ordinance, and if I'm understanding, we can change it to 6:30, and that would require work sessions to begin then at 5:30. Okay.
Or you could do it after the city council meeting, you know.
Oh, that's a, that's a treat.
Regular council meetings up early enough, there's room at the end.
Well, there you go, okay. All right, very good. Well, we'll get that changed then, okay? Thank you. And then the last item we have here on the agenda this evening is, it's the first meeting of every year, we asked the council to, or I asked the council to nominate the mayor pro tem. And Councilmember Servini has been the mayor pro tem for the last two years. She's done a great job, and if the council's inclined, I would like to see Councilmember Servini continue to be the mayor pro tem.
I think she's well qualified. So I will nominate her.
So you make a motion?
I make a motion to nominate Councilmember Servini to be mayor pro tem for the next year.
Very good. Okay, a second?
Second.
Then moved and seconded to nominate Councilmember Servini to continue on as mayor pro tem. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries.
Aye.
Thank you very much, council, and thank you, Councilmember Servini.
Thank you, everyone.
And with that, that's all that's on the agenda. If I could get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Just move a second to adjourn, all in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries.